Trustee Brooks.
President, um, Trustee Brooks said he would come in today. Contact me today.
Justin Brooks? Who are you guys? Oh, I don't remember. We called you.
You can do it, don't worry.
This time we're working with the pledge of allegiance.
Tito.
She has one idea.
Right in.
Would yours wave? We want to see the flag waving if you got it on the phone.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any general public comments? Do you have any general public comments? Um, Trustee Brooks, comment?
Sit in the corner when you come in, please.
Oh, she's agenda. Oh. Public comments? There's none, so we will continue with our agenda. Discussion item. Discussion related to Bill and Casper and Redwood relationship for many pertaining to food and beverage operations. Discussion will start.
John, we're gonna use the podium?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you wanna remove this microphone over here?
I think we sit down.
Okay, fuck, you need, I'll move around. All right. So you can unplug it.
Well, first, we'd like to thank everyone for having us come out today. I'd like to thank the Madam President, Board of Trustees, Curtis Purse, Minister of Defense, Chief Pagan, I don't know what's gonna call you. But, um, it's a great opportunity for myself and my partner, Damian Gibson, to come out. I'm Adam Shorter, to talk to you about what we want to do at University Park Golf Course, how we can be assets in community, some things that we do can be changed in order to bring this brilliant staple of a facility here at University Park Golf Course to be a staple of the village. Um, a little bit about us, Damian and I, we met several years ago, um, 2002, when we was getting our NDA government state. And one of the thi- right across the street. And one of the things that we said as we went out and doing business endeavors was, we wanted to give back to our community, we wanted to partner, utilize a lot of our experiences that we have gained individually, uh, which you'll see in the packet, uh, we come from two totally different backgrounds, but what we have in common is our joint NDA. This, for us, is a great opportunity for us to continue what we have been doing in Southland. Um, many of you know, we own other restaurants in the Southland, we own Redwood Lux, Rightin' with the Hills, Red Star Cocktail Lounge, and we partner in a host of other endeavors throughout the Southland in smaller major partnerships. What we wanna do here is bring something that's eclectic, something that is different, that can tie into the community that is affordable, that is respectable, that can drive traffic that is needed and deserved in University Park. So I would turn it over to Damian before I get back, for him to give a little bit of insight of some of the things that we want, then we'll open up for questions, and we can have an open dialogue on what the community wants and what we want to bring to find a common ground, and if we can find that, I think we can be a great niche in a partnership for the village and University Park and for the citizens alike.
Absolutely, thank you. We have seen different things happening out here in University Park, at the golf course in particular, one of them is the Stepford Center happening on a weekly basis, and I believe, um, a brunch that used to occur on a regular basis and was pretty popular, and unfortunately, over time, we saw it kinda run away with the brunch and the food aspect. The restaurant here, the kitchen is a full-service kitchen, we have a great facility to accommodate not just the students from across the street, but your residents, right here in, uh, Richardson Park, uh, University Park, um, we've got Homie right down the street. So this is, this is a great opportunity because it's within three miles of almost 30,000 people, and they don't really have options to go to for a nicer dining option, uh, other than fast food. So we wanna actually bring something similar to what we have at Redwood over to this location, maybe a, maybe a touch, a touch more casual and affordable, um, but, but something that the entire community can embrace and actually come out and experience, not just good food, but also extracurricular activities, uh, the events that we do, uh, we're gonna bring some of them to the community, and the virtual help, we think will help to build more of a, a community presence and, and give University Park a, uh, a real event you'll be proud of that's in your backyard. Um, again, Adam said, we went to both with the government state university, we got our masters, his is, uh, he works with the numbers, and I work with the marketing, so, uh, for the past, uh, 20 years, I've been in real estate and pharmacy for sales, and I've done nothing but sales and marketing, and so the, the things that we do here would definitely drive more traffic, the advertising, the direct-to-consumer campaign, the internet marketing, the signage, the, the going out to businesses and just inviting them to come try lunch, uh, maybe a lunch special or a dinner special, the things that we like to see, will definitely drive more traffic to the venue and obviously more revenue to the city as a result. And so that's part of the reason why we agreed to, to really work hard and try to make this a reality, because you have a jewel sitting here which you all know, and we truly believe that working with the community and working with the village and the surrounding communities, we committed to bring this to life.
And, and most importantly, um, we understand that this is, we, we specialize in restaurants. We wanna be a true partner to Casper. What they have done to the greens and the outsiders has been nothing but remarkable and commendable. And with those partnerships, as we look at the golf areas and other things that's going to other communities, we think with someone that specializes in food service along with somebody that's an expert in the greens, um, as an avid golfer myself, I think that partnership can work to foster, well, they can help us, we can help them. We do not wanna come in here and be adversary, we wanna just be a partner. We understand that we have to get price points, we wanna be a competitor to a lot of other golf courses who are out here. Uh, we talked about the food service, but there's another very important, this is a perfect place for private rental. When you look at the demographics and you look at the competitive analysis that we've been studying a lot lately, you see you have less than three public places where you can go within a 15-mile radius that come, that's comparable to what we have here. Anything else you have to go to private golf courses, which is not affordable to the residents in University Park, like in our neighboring cities of Madison, Park Forest, Country Club Hills, this is a destination. Um, for far too long, we continue to think of what is destination focal points in the Southland. Well, number one, University Park has the number one in the university right across the street. No one can say that they bring in thousands of individuals on a weekly basis. Secondly, you have something that's very important with all the industrial things behind it, which is a hidden gem. We wanna bring them out, we wanna cater to them, we want them to be a part of what we have here, whether it's celebrating your Christmas parties here, celebrating anniversaries, baby showers. We don't want this to just be a one-stop shop, we wanna try to focus our marketing bridge safety, where we can have individuals starting a family, or we can have an individual that's retiring from a job, where they say, this is the place where I wanna celebrate. Want to be a staple, a place of members, a place where you can say, we came to University Park Golf Course, or you came to the clubhouse. Our name is not in stone, because we can't give a name unless we have a signed contract in a business deal, so we are open, we're gonna do as much market analysis as we possibly can, uh, without it being public, without having us, because we only could go out to the community and to the residents and say, what would you want, but one of the things that we would do, and we always do, we do a full-size marketing analysis, asking the residents what they want. Yeah, we want this to be a destination and pool for other municipalities and other cities, but first and foremost, we're here for the residents. We want them to have a place that they call home, and they can bring their friends, and then we can be the shining light or something that they can say, this is what we have in our community, and this is their clubhouse, this is their home, this is their recreational center. Uh, from a pricing standpoint, that's where we're gonna build affordability measures at. If an event comes in, we're gonna, we're gonna try to create something that's customizable to the residents. If you're coming from external, then this is our price point, but if you're a resident, we're gonna find a way to upchain your business, and we're gonna try to make sure that things are affordable to them so that they can come back, and we understand the importance of clientele, they might pay one time and just price too much, they're not gonna come back again, so we're gonna find the price points that's attributable that they can come back. Um, we won't, we will not say that we can turn this around in six months, because marketing at minimum will take 90 days before you touch, because individuals wanna hear about something, not once, but twice, but three times, they don't wanna hear a prayer or referral. So we stand here going that we would take on immediate loss and there would not be no instant gratification, but we willing to build from the ground up to create the foundation, and as you can see, this, everything is starting, it's, it's a little, it's a little wind behind us right now, and it started from when it was closed a couple of years ago to where we at now. So it's not a beginning, but it's, it's, it's a good start, and we just wanna be a partner. So without us overtalking, uh, we gave a package to give a little more information, we just opened up for some questions.
Okay, uh, good evening, everyone, uh, my name is Trustee Curtis McMullin, and first of all, I'd like to acknowledge and appreciate you guys for coming in and presenting, uh, this opportunity to University Park. As you already stated, University Park is a sort of like a diamond in the rough in the south suburbs. It's something that we need here in this village, so our residents can come and can actually plan events and be proud of at the same time. Come here and be able to set up organs, set up weddings and things of that nature. I advocate your partnership because of your business acumen. I really appreciate you owning other restaurants and other businesses, I think you're, with your partnership, you will work with Casper, but Casper's gonna take care of the grounds, and you're gonna take care of the restaurant aspect of it, but your business acumen precedes you. So I think it would be a grand opportunity for you to partner with us here at University Park, because you've done your research, you've done your marketing research, so I think it's a plus for University Park to add you as a partner, to work with us, and everybody knows that it's been sort of difficult for us here in the golf course, but with your, uh, plan that you have a strategic plan, I think it will work out immensely. And, uh, I wanted to say something first, because I have a previous engagement I have to attend, so you have my full support on this partnership with University Park, and, uh, I'd just like to let everybody know within the, um, community that I truly support you guys and your efforts to make this a better place for us to live and to, uh, bring business in University Park. Thank you very much, Damian, thank you very much, Adam, and, uh, thank you very much. All right, bye. Got it, Mayor, I have to go. Trustee, I have to go.
Thank you. We still have a call. Thank you for your time, folks. And their vote is?
You have my full support.
Trustee Brooks? Thank you, Mr. Shorter, Mr. Gibson, please pardon with the sunglasses, I have a busted vessel in my eye, don't look that right now, so. That's what you get when you yell. That's what you get when you yell at kids, I say, he's coached football, I'm gonna say Mattson Band.
A coach, well, I'm not a good coach of football, I did coach football, I did coach basketball. A little bit about my background, I'm also a trustee of the village of Madison, so I truly understand everything that the village is going through from an economic development standpoint, um, so, I wish, yes, I do coach.
Um, so then you know when you yell too much, things go wrong, so, yeah, pardon sunglasses for a second, but look, I, I, I just wanna kinda get an idea, I, um, this is, uh, being presented to me, uh, what ideas off top that you think, I know you say you have to do your analysis, uh, I know my partner said he had supported you, I, I didn't, maybe I didn't catch something, but, um, from experience as an officer, I have seen where those come in and, and marketing can be successful, I seen, I was just jotting notes as you were talking, when I worked at Country Club Hills, Sweet Georgia Brown and the Country Club Hills Theater was an example, something that was marketed widely and brought crowds from Chicago, you know, everywhere, and then of course, that, uh, it was that late 90s when the 50-yard line was the safe 50-yard line, you know, it brought a large crowd on Friday and Saturday night. Uh, so then, just an idea, me, I kinda wanna see that, what, what, do you have that vision, and if you do, what ideas can you give, I, I know you haven't done your analysis yet, but if you could just give me a piece of your vision that would convince me of what you're gonna be doing.
Well, one of the things, I would say a few things, I'm sure Damian can say, we have a lot of ideas.
Okay.
One of the things that's sitting on, um, my tongue right now is, we have football season coming around. This should be like a cheers on Sundays, you should have the community out there, you should have plasma TVs, the patio, and you should have everyone out enjoying the games. Um, and on top of that, you come out right away, and again, food costs is, is a thing that's very delicate, because you make a lot of food, there's not much profit margins in food, so we have to drive individuals to try different things. So on top of all, I'm just giving you one here as a Sunday, you might try, um, soul foods, Sunday's, whether it be the brunch or breakfast, we do brunch at Redwood, we bring a brunch in and try to market to what everyone else is doing at that moment. But as you look at some of the things that's going on, one of the first things that we would do, we would work with management who we think is great here, we would try to partner with them to see what has been working, and we know that this is a destination and individuals wanna do special events here. So in order to drive revenue instantly, we would reach out and try to book up as many weekends and private events as humanly possible, so we can use those funding dollars to reinvest in what is equipment. Uh, one of the things you notice, if you're trying to get somebody out here for nighttime, is pitch black dark, so we gotta find a way to make this look bright, and so that's gonna cost, and so with, as we were looking for things, the first thing that Damian and I said, what can we do to drive revenue to reinvest without having to come into the board to ask for money? And so those are the things that we try to do, so if there's a dark wedding outside, they know that everyone's coming here for that. Uh, we know that there's a big stepers night here on Friday, so we would try to partner and see the pros and cons of maintaining, we don't wanna come and disrupt anything. The first 30 days, we will have marketing things for the outliers, uh, futuristic things, because minimum 30 days to market, but with that being said, um, this is a great place in a, a night like this, this is a great night, you have a great community night, I mean, you can bring individuals out. But most importantly, you got that school across the street, those individuals gotta have a place that's called home, whether they're here for four years now, now that it's a four-year university, or two years, we have adult learners there. Anyone that's at school right here, why can't this be the place where you come before your evening? Why can't this be the place where you come to eat at beforehand? Uh, we even went in and studied the food and the air marketing they have there, what are they doing, what can we do, not that we wanna cripple anyone else, but what is missing over there that we can bring here? So that's another avenue that we want to talk to, uh, reach out and talk to Will Davis, um, one of the things that, uh, we did, we said, one of us gotta get involved, and he said, you're gonna get involved, so he ain't gonna get involved. And so, um, I recently joined, um, the College of Business Dean's advisory board, so I'm intimately involved along with Damian with the College of Business where we at, but we also working along with the president and others, so we have an inside to pull that traction, because now we've been on the board for a while, this is not even before University Park Golf Course. Us giving back and reaching back into the community is definitely something that we wanna do, because we wanna understand not only from a resident's point of view, but we're gonna understand from a staff and a worker's point of view, because I don't know if this is not totally sustainable, because as we know, the economy's at scale, the workforce is leaving, and so we gotta figure out, how can this place survive with those that, when the workforce go other places to work, we gotta have a way to drive, so as you, if you look at a region, everyone's gone. So for the businesses, which you have probably the most, we gotta figure out them, then we gotta get these elements in industrial, whether we gotta cater, whether we gotta look for a lot of different things, so that's another revenue component before we even drive into the entertainment aspect. And the entertainment aspect is just special events, we would do the same thing, we would invest, if it's a live, then if it's a karaoke night, at the same time, we gotta make sure that we're not charging, because it has to be affordable, and, and the sticker prices can scare people away, and so those are the things that we're trying to figure out, and that comes with just a market analysis and trial and error. Error, some events we gonna try, it might fail, but we're gonna need individuals to say, hey, here's a couple of months you have to drive, because again, it's gonna take a couple times for the word traffic to go. Damian?
One of the first things we did at Redwood, when we took over the previous festival, was added Happy Hour. Uh, Redwood is strategically located right on the corner of Golden Road and Douglas Avenue. We have a great business, uh, district right there. We incorporated a Happy Hour for the Saturday, 30% off all cocktails. When we stepped into the restaurant, the restaurant was dead from 2:00 to about 7:00. It was empty, no customers, all previous owners used to go work out at the gym or go play ball. We incorporated the Happy Hour, and within, I would say, within 30 days of us marketing and the working and marketing, we started to see traffic at the bar during, from about 4:30 to about 7:30, and we saw the traffic we wanted to see, which were business individuals coming in, working on their laptops. I put on every table in the bar area, I put a, um, a hub that you could plug your USB charger into, it's full of each table, so you can actually come in, charge a cell phone, plug your computer in, and work right there. We have free Wi-Fi, which we incorporated when we got there. That instantly drove more traffic, business traffic, because it's what we wanted to see, which also drove the bar, uh, sales up, which is another thing we wanted to see. So when you talk about what do we plan to do immediately to bring foot traffic into the doors, those are some of the simple things. In the packet, as Adam was speaking to, I think page five or six is where you'll see some of the food and then some of the events that we currently do with Redwood, and we very successful with advertising, giving tons of people out. We are, our Saturday Night Live at Redwood is beyond capacity on most nights, we have to really stand up and wait to get in. So driving business and people in is, is, is one of the things we specialize in. Um, so that part is for us, especially with the events is the easier part, but keeping it local and keeping it something that the business can take advantage of, vicinity area, I believe Happy Hour is gonna be something big, they have to know about it. With anything you do, you can give away gold, if nobody knows, it's just gonna sit there. So we have to make sure you get the word out to the right people, and sometimes that takes what we have to do when I went over to, um, I wanna say, Markus, or Aunt Markus in Olivia Fields, I had to walk over there and talk to the, uh, public relations person and talk to their A child park department, let them know, we're across the street, and these are the things that we do. So I believe things like that, just grassroots marketing and door-to-door touching people, as long as they know you're here, and they know you're offering something of value, they'll actually come out and check it out. And once you get them in the door the first time, the goal is to keep them coming back. So our goal, I, I, I believe we'll be successful in getting them door the first time, and then as long as we staff properly and deliver the right kind of, they're gonna keep coming back.
Would it ever, would it, would it ever get to the point where you would hear it on the radio about our advertising, have you ever thought about it, getting that thing to come out to University Park?
So like, one of the things is probably like, what make right now, we're gonna do something for fall, we will, we would say, come out, this is the annual, whatever. We're gonna do special events, so, there's a, a great artist, a great singer that's in town, I don't care if you go back to the 70s or you go to, we don't wanna go too young, but we keep it at a certain level, with this venue, we would sub-book them when they're here. So you might have a concert at Government State, and we would say, would you like to come here for your after-party? And so that's why we're trying to partner with all the venues and understand who's here and what's going on. We might can't afford to bring somebody from LA, but we find out you're Indianapolis or Chicago, for that weekend, we're gonna have you here. Um, at another venue, I mean, the artists that we have brought in is, is rapidly growing, because we, we try to find things on the tail end that we have to market. We have great relationships with W G C I, I mean, 106.3, um, it doesn't even matter if it's B96, and it's, it, we, we tap into every market and every corner that we possibly can go on to.
One of the events that, cut you off here, one of the events that I think I put you in there was, uh, Long Island is a networking event that we were doing with AC Green, and he was advertising Redwood on the radio station, he actually was, um, was collecting business cards of patrons, and we'd bring them onto his radio show, and AC Green is a good friend of ours, so we'll do the same thing, we can actually bring that same point out this way. Um, you know, he's very open, and, and is willing to work with us to help us as well with, you know, partnerships, and that's free for your advertising.
For University Park. And so like, right now, um, one of the things that we have going on is a big blood drive that I did every year with my wife and kids. If you turn a 106.3, 92.3, I guarantee you tonight in the morning, you're gonna have odd times. That's how much we pushing already, whether it's for us just giving back or for us just trying to get it out there, so we gonna, we not gonna stop anywhere or any way to make sure that we're doing a full marketing campaign. Um, we know the most important marketing is word of mouth, so we're gonna instantly, um, try to make sure that our retention levels are up, whether you're partnering with Five Dives or any other retention, but most importantly, everything that we do, we give back. So it's, it's one thing to drive and generate revenue, which we don't think this is gonna be a profitable thing that's gonna turn a night, we know it's gonna be an uphill battle, and we prepared to face those challenges, but most importantly is, we wanna be a partner in the community, we wanna be ingrained. Um, so when we say ingrained, we meet with the mayor of the county on Friday morning, hey, Mayor, we meet. We not meeting because something's wrong, we're meeting because we wanna find out what he wants, and with those relationships that we try to be, we're meeting with the trustees, trustee mass, they need to meet, why are you meeting? Because we wanna understand not only from our elected officials, but we do the same thing with our, with our guests that's residents, what do you want? We only can try to start it, but we go off of the temperament of our elected officials and our residents to give what's needed, and when we hear enough, we do it. So one thing that we can definitely say up here today is, we're not in this by ourselves, we need everyone in this role to be a partner in order to push this, because if we're struggling from the support of the board, if we're struggling from the support of the residents, this would not work, because it has to be a total joint venture in order for this to go, and I can guarantee we're gonna do our part times five, we just look for partners in the community and from the board and from the local community and businesses to push it, so we're totally with you in trying to do everything. Like I was telling, I mentioned, I say, regardless of what happens, tell me what I can market, uh, we have our own entertainment companies, so if you, if you used to follow us, we market from our business pages, but we also create entertainment companies, because somebody get tired of saying, University Park Golf Course, this they doing, but believe it or not, they hear from a third party, which is us behind the scenes, oh! Now, we not saying we doing the, uh, Russia thing where we creating a million Facebook pages, but we understand the importance of marketing from a lot of different areas and tapping into different segments and groups, so when you got a special event, you can talk to this group, you can talk to this group. Um, when we roll around, we see a lot of churches, they need to be involved here as well, so you have the entertainment, we have to tap into them, we gotta talk to the pastors, hey, I know at the church you hungry, or before you go, you hungry, so come on in, eat too. And so when we look at it, we never try to focus on one particular group, because we have to make sure that we trisegmented so that we can tap into we have to make sure that we trisegmented so that we can tap into a lot of markets to be, to be successful. So we get a morning crowd, we get an evening crowd, and if it works, it works. Our guests, um, the local churches wanna eat dinner, okay? We can get you for dinner, but we're gonna find a way to get you, and we're gonna keep trying as many ways as possible.
Um, to start off with, could you, actually, you know, just for the public that will see this later on, they need to know that the golf course for, since it's purchased, has lost money big time. Uh, probably over eleven million dollars has been purchased, the golf course, has never made any money. One of the reasons why Billy Casper, uh, has taken over the golf course is because, um, we have not had capable, management capable of doing that. And even with their leadership and their professionals, because they manage over a hundred golf courses across the country, it still has been losing money. And of course, you know, the food and beverage part of it is a big part of it. And, um, what I have acquired in the past about, you know, why we haven't had more events, the pricing has been, uh, so that it'll make some money, and as a result, people have walked away, you know, because they, they, they really, uh, didn't wanna pay that much. So the first thing I'd like to note is, since we have a contract with Billy Casper, what is your proposal in relation to Billy Casper in terms of the relationship? Because one of the other things that we said when we brought Billy Casper on is that we will keep our oar out of the water, because all we did, you know, politically, not me, but other folks, start messing around with stuff and, and, you know, the, the people who managed it, um, before were led into a whole lot of different directions that cost us even more money.
Right.
Okay? And so, even this last year, I think, uh, with this, this fiscal year we have, there's, it was still a three hundred thousand dollar loss. Okay? So the first thing I'd like to understand is from a legal standpoint, what is your relationship gonna be with Billy Casper since right now, as I understand it, our contract is with them?
So from a legal standpoint, we are, uh, oh, I'm sorry, from a legal standpoint, we are essentially going to be, uh, an identity of our own, uh, partnering with Billy Casper because we occupy, obviously, the same plot of land. Um, there's currently a budget that's being given to Billy Casper to operate this plot of land, as I, as we'll call it for right now. Uh, within that budget, there's a section that operates the food and beverage and restaurant, utilities, ice gas, maintenance of the immediate building, and then, uh, aside that goes towards golf and everything related to golf. So Billy Casper, we've, we've had discussions, they agreed to carve out the portion that's already being allocated on a month-to-month basis, carve that portion out and hand it over to us to manage. And from there is where we'll, that's the, where we get the finances from. So we're not asking the village, uh, for more money. What we plan to do, because we do see things that we'd like to update or improve, so we're asking the village for, for the portion that's already been allocated, and we plan to add to it out of our own, uh, pockets to do some improvements that we wanna see done in the facility itself, to make it more accommodating and, and prepare it for, uh, larger crowds and more business coming through.
Because, at least my understanding, and, and, you know, again, we have a contract with them, so legally, I don't know what your, you have to subcontract with, with Billy Casper?
No, no, we renegiate our contract, we renegotiate our contract with you, just involving golf, so it'll be too separate.
Because the other piece is, you know, I mentioned the three hundred thousand, most of which occurred, you know, just prior to this, but it's paid this, this, this year because I know when speaking with the manager, that's it. You know, we're done coming out of, out of our pockets, you know?
Yeah.
We, we, we need police, we need, you know, a lot of other things for our kids and so forth. And so, we don't, we're done coming out of our pocket with, with stuff. So, uh, I saw a plan, it was a spreadsheet that I thought, you know, when I asked, you know, what the plan was. Has that been updated?
So, just to clarify, trustee Pagan, um, there was a meeting that occurred approximately two weeks ago, it was myself, Mayor Covington, trustee Wilson, members of Billy Casper, Vice President Billy Casper and Redwood. So, in a manner of compromise, um, and removal of liability, Billy Casper, um, does not want a subcontracting relationship with Redwood. Um, what was determined with the village attorney, and this is a concept that we're still looking at, is, um, Redwood becoming a separate contractor of the village. And, uh, renegotiating Billy Casper's contract, Billy Casper has already stated what provisions of their contract need to be modified and removed. Um, basically, the liability will be shifted to Redwood as far as the, uh, insurance, uh, the maintenance of this facility. Uh, Billy Casper would be basically only utilizing the pro shop. Uh, Redwood would be responsible for this entire facility, including the maintenance of the facility. Billy Casper would maintain golf, they would do everything golf, including the pro shop, and they would, uh, develop a subcontracting relationship in regards to food and beverage for golfing events and various things, um, that go on. Billy Casper, um, at this point feels, uh, if this is gonna happen, the village's choice to happen, they want to be kind of removed, uh, from the food and beverage a hundred percent completely, and, uh, really, uh, move that towards Redwood. And I say that, you know, basically as a concept, the village attorney and myself had a conversation today about it, based on the board's determination. Today, we'll look at further research, uh, because you have to, you have to look at, uh, various liability, insurance, um, and when looking at the allocation of monies that currently go to Billy Casper, we would have to look at a distribution breakout, uh, prorating the amount that goes towards golf compared to food and beverage. And, um, Redwood has agreed, uh, that that is the amount that they will deal with. Any losses above and beyond their amount, they will absorb those losses themselves. Um, I've been very adamant in regards to the budget, in regards to the golf course, uh, facility. The village's budget is strict, the village at this point cannot take any risk as far as losing any further money other than what's budgeted in this year's budget. Um, and as I said, uh, Redwood has stated they will absorb those losses. But of course, we still have to put that to paper. We have a con, open concept, uh, out currently. Um, so really, that's where we're at. Um, there's some legalities that we have to look at in regards to litigation pending that we have that I cannot mention in this meeting, um, as well as, uh, various other factors in regards to various provisions of village ordinance, in regards to bid and RFP process that can potentially be waived. Uh, village attorney is currently looking into those sections or ordinance to see, uh, if the board can waive those specific processes based on specific provisions of the ordinance. So based on looking at that, you know, we have to really look at, uh, the totality of everything. I think it was very important and imperative for Redwood today to present their proposal by thinking, because I believe, um, in their proposal, I believe in what the concept or what they wanna do, but we just have to make sure that it fits based on, you know, various other factors that the village has. Based on board's guidance, I have attorney wise, kind of look at the legalities, they are, uh, the, the village attorney already has Billy Casper's contract, we already have Billy Casper's comments on their contract, what needs to be removed, uh, uh, dissected out of their contract, um, their contract being renegotiated. Um, we would have to look at, um, basically open dialogue with Redwood to see what they're looking at. And at the end of the day, I would request the village attorney provide opinion based on, um, the litigation that's going on currently, if there is other factors as far as, uh, the board's authority to, uh, enter into an agreement with Redwood and separating the golf course out, um, based on various reasons. I immediately don't see any glaring issues with it, but I just wanna make sure the village covers bases based on its prior history with the running of the golf course and previous management of the golf course.
Right. Uh, when I asked before, uh, about a plan, I was given a spreadsheet, and, and I didn't know who the plan was from, because I remember I said...
It was from Redwood.
Right, it was from Redwood, right. And that plan, uh, it, it didn't have anything, it's just numbers, it was just a spreadsheet that showed a thirty-one thousand dollar loss with no, um, there was a big question mark in there for the rent. So are, are we looking at...
That's a whole, totally different concept. That was the initial concept that was presented, but at this point, um, based on the meeting with Billy Casper, Billy Casper at this point would, would be more, um, willing to kind of separate out completely and, and Redwood not to be a subcontractor of Billy Casper, but, uh, Redwood having a direct relationship with the village and the restaurant. So we'll be looking at actually doing a second, village doing a second contractual agreement, separating out food and beverage, and with golf operations still maintained, being maintained by Billy Casper.
Well, if that, if that spreadsheet that I received was from Redwood, why would Billy Casper's expenses be in that, in that spreadsheet?
Because they looked at budgetary expenses that were budgeted this year as a projection of basically, uh, initial numbers that they kind of, and these are rough numbers that they provided based on numbers from the... Yeah, the spreadsheet that we received from Billy Casper was their, uh, their estimates, uh, projections of what they would do in twenty eighteen. And so, we were trying to develop something off the original conversations based on those numbers. And again, it was a, a slightly different kind of, uh, concept at the time that, that we were positioning, as you could say, we were taking at the time, and we originally got those numbers. Uh, for us, we are, when we get the actuals, what's, what, what we've seen, what's been seen so far in twenty eighteen, we, and we incorporate that with the projections that they got on the table as we then put together a budget and can give, uh, some numbers on our behalf for what we plan, what we expect to see and what we expect to spend. But again, we, we need to first, uh, get the actuals from at least the first half of twenty eighteen.
So he's reading on the actuals from Billy Casper, not the village personnel?
No, 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 from Billy Casper.
Yeah, no, no.
Yeah, yeah.
You have not received the actuals yet?
Yeah, because, um, you know, I would like to see some pro forma financials, I guess it's kind of fundamental. Uh, the other thing that kind of bothers me, uh, in, along those lines is that, uh, you indicated that you have to do some, a different marketing analysis to determine what the price points would be for different activities that, you know, you have, which means that you don't know what that is yet. And, you know, so that becomes even more important in my mind to, for you to cost it out. I used to do strategic planning, so I used to cost out everything. So, but, so you need to cost out those activities and let us know, you know, where things are gonna be, you know, financially. So, um, the other piece along those lines was that, um, you indicated that, you know, there'd be plasma TVs for different activities. So are, are you gonna provide that capital investment for those kinds of things?
Yeah, that's one of the things that, uh, when I mentioned it, we're gonna, uh, take the, take some expenses and invest right off the top. Uh, uh, the bigger TVs are something that we're gonna actually bring in from the very beginning, because I feel that we need to have that if we're, if we're gonna be doing our football events, we need to have larger TVs in there. So yeah, so that's an investment we're gonna make and, and, and we saw, um, as well as, I think I was speaking, uh...
We also just spent about twenty thousand dollars on the deck furniture, right?
Uh, it came up.
About seven or eight.
Yeah, twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And as you mentioned, the events, one of the things that we're gonna do, these events, we plan on taking that on. Like, so, only thing we're asking for is an even playing field of what Casper had. All the extra amenities and things that we wanna go, we're finally taking that risk because we already mentioned that anything above and beyond is us. And one of the other things that we talked about was, when we turn a profit, we're not saying, hey, we wanna turn a profit in the wrong, we wanna give back a percentage back to the village if a profit was ever turned. Now, we know it never happened, so I know for the village's break even, it'd be a great day. But, but from our standpoint is, we're, we're not trying to do nothing more, nothing less, but for all the extra things that we're doing, bringing in events, trying these, they lose, that's us. And we understand that. Uh, from us, from operating a restaurant from a dead break even, you gotta take every single thing that comes with it. So that's the culture we're from. But, well, what we want to do is just make sure that we're giving even playing field, we know it's an uphill battle, and we're, we're, we're ready to fight, but we just ask that the budgets that were given and the losses that were planned in the budget accordingly, it's moved, it shifted over, and then we take everything from that one.
And well, the, the budget called for profitability two years ago, and, and part of that was that the village was supposed to get something, so, you know, uh, from my personal standpoint, it's up to the board, you know, I, I don't have a problem with us at least break even, but, you know, I think this community has paid over ten million dollars for basically other people to have fun at their, at their comps. And I think I'm, I'm gonna be done here, period, but I'm gonna be, I'm done with that especially, you know, it'll be somebody else's headache to worry about in the future, okay? Uh, but, uh, you know, that's a big concern of mine. Um, the, I mean, the other thing is, is that unless you do those pro forma financials and at least cost out some of your major activities, to know how deep your pocket's gonna have to be, because I guarantee you, you're gonna be losing money for a while here. Because as, you know, we said, because we had this conversation before when we met, about there's a difference in getting folks out here in the dark, even with, if you, you know, we put up some lights, as opposed to over in Olympia Fields where you, across from a mall, you're in a mall, and you're surrounded by, uh, upper income homes.
So I'm gonna give you a, a, a brief, just a brief example. Um, so, I could, I could come in on a Thursday night and bring my kar, bring karaoke, cost a hundred seventy-five dollars for a gentleman that does my karaoke. He has every piece of equipment that he needs, tie into the televisions. I would initially market directly to Governor's State University, they have four hundred-plus residents that live on site. So I'm targeting them, I'm also targeting the communities that are within a five, ten year drive up here to invite them out for the karaoke. The first week, I'd probably get ten, fifteen people, but by the second week of doing karaoke, I'd probably have thirty or forty people. If I get thirty or forty people in here spending twenty-five dollars apiece, I'm starting to see, uh, profit in being open for three hours, seventeen. So, if I can do that on a continual basis, which is what we do, if we break down the events that we do, we break them down to the, I, you know, we break them down to the per person. So if I throw a party and I know I wanna make X amount of dollars, I go to, how many people do I need in the building? How much am I charging at the door and how much am I charging at the bar? People will come in for free and spend thirty dollars at your bar versus pay ten dollars, you charge ten dollars at the door. People may, I'm not paying ten dollars at the door now. So you have to do the math and make it real basic, but generating the income, it, it, it does take marketing and traction is important, but it can happen, it's not impossible. You're out here, it, it is dark, but people are driven to further out, let's, it's to do stuff, so it's not impossible. I was just in Moni at, uh, Frat Brothers House, did this annual fundraiser, at his house in Moni, he had over two hundred people in the pitch black dark that drove from the city to come out. So I know for a fact, he was five minutes up the road. So next year, his fundraiser is right here. So it's, it's, it's things as simple as that. People will travel if you have something for them to come to, but you have to give them something to come to. So that's what we come into play. We know how to give you something that you wanna take part in. And that's why it's important to understand the community as well, because we have several bands we tap into. I guarantee you, one of our live bands will get these people out.
Trustee?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just have a question, because, you know, I, I agree with you, you need to be, you need to be lit up outside, you know, for people to come. Who's gonna pay to have that done? Are you looking for, right? Are you looking for us to do that, or you no longer come in and do it, you know, light it up yourself?
Well, there are certain things that we can do, that will have to be priced out, because when we come in here, I don't wanna say, we have to come in and get inspection available. I don't want to say we have to come in and get inspection of the building. Uh, we know there are some major infrastructure things that we're not, we don't own the building, so there are certain things that you can do. One of the first things I would do is call ComEd. Um, I know several other, um, establishments went out and get certain lights. ComEd can do certain things, those lights to light it up if you talk to them and you work with them. But some things that we can easily do, you can wrap lights around here, you can see that it's not a, like, empty building in the middle of a farm that you, out there. So those are things you can do. But you're talking about putting massive lights up and down the street, those aren't things that we'd rather we could do, but we're open to trying to find grants and anything else to get it going. But again, that's when, if, if a profit or, or if we were able to come back in and see, we could have budgeted, it's a loser proposition. So we say, hey, we saved twenty thousand dollars. We still within a budget, we're trying to save, but if we could redirect some of these profits and expenditures to other things that's needed for improvement and capital investments, like us even in a small business, we believe in capital. So we start planning out, these are a certain type of things that we're gonna do for capital over the next couple of years. So we're gonna start shifting some of those things in. We don't know the depreciation schedule, even if there's one year for the university golf club. So that's one of the things that, what do you guys have on a depreciation schedule right now and what's next up? If you tell me nothing, then that tells us, oh, we got a lot of work ahead of us. But it's, we don't know, so again, we're, we're, we got a hand right now that we truly don't know everything. We just know that there's an opportunity and, and to be honest with you, it's like a Field of Dreams moment, that we're sitting here trying to figure out, how can we pull out? We don't have the blueprint that's gonna come next week and it's gonna be there. But what we do know, we have the fortitude and experiences and the connectivity to tap into a lot of markets that others couldn't tap into. And you're going to Redwood and say, come to University Park, you're going to Red Star instead, you're going to any of our marketing platforms, because we're not gonna isolate this as a independent business. Some of the things, we don't have to hire, if, say a chef left, we don't have to go out and hire a new chef, we can redeploy. We have staff, we have staff in here tonight that we can easily readily move in, so we don't have to take on so many burdens, because we're gonna utilize what we have. We're not gonna try to recreate this wheel overnight. And that's gonna save us tremendously. Uh, but to answer your question, those are things we have to come back to the city with, where you said, we're in a whole twenty-five thousand dollar life. We're, that's partnership where we have to come in. But we're rather trying to build the revenue to pay for it first. You don't have it now, you're operational, so we're not gonna come in and say, you don't have lights next week either, might be a year, until we can get everything that we need.
So can you, can, can you provide us with some pro forma financials then, based upon the new? It'll be, if it's gonna be just on theirs, they don't need it, he doesn't need their actuals, they've got their own club plan. Because they got their own programs they're gonna be bringing, right?
But the programs is addition, is additional revenue that we're gonna generate. Um, again, in order for us to come in, we need to see, I would prefer to see a five year historical analysis of what has occurred at this university park. Um, it's, it's a village, so, I don't, I don't, however you want to do it to give us. We have yet to see a historical analysis for five years on what was given and what the losses were. So I'm a accountant by nature, so if I can just get the data, I can do the work. But we haven't solved it to build a performer. We could come in and say, this is what we think the expenses and the revenues, I don't know what the light is, I don't know how much the gas is with all these windows in, I can't, those are cost points that I can't project. So I need to know, if we're gonna take over the facility, what has been the light bill over the last five years? You've been closed for several months. So now my performer that I would give, even if I got the actions, I gotta do forecasts on my own. So what we need is all of the detailed analysis and findings that has occurred. And once we get those, we can base it off averages at that moment. So the more data that I can get back from Casper and from the village on what has been expended, the more adequate financials I can push back out.
Can I tell you this? You probably wouldn't get any accurate data from.
We're gonna, that's why I was about to say.
Yeah, the, the golf course has been so mismatched. When we got, when we, when we were elected in two thousand and eleven, I was reviewing the expenses for the golf course. And they were saying, for example, that the electric bill was like, uh, three hundred dollars a month. My home electric bill was more than two hundred dollars a month in the summertime when you run an air conditioner, let alone, you know, this kind of space. So even if we provide, we still, we, we just got through struggling to get the information into the system for the last couple of years. So to go back beyond that, I'm just here to tell you.
If we could get two thousand.
If you could, we, we could probably get you the utilities. You know, that, that kind of thing, but everything else, the staffing, that's gonna be up to you.
Well, that part, that's easy, yeah, that part, yeah, we, we got that part, we can do that.
Right, well, and you know what you're operating.
We could do that, but we would need to know, so because we're operating under a budget, so we need to know what the budget is. So if you say to me, I want you to throw an event, I want you to do something for me, and this is what I want you to do. I want you to bring a hundred people in here. I'm gonna ask you, okay, how much money am I working with to bring a hundred people in here? If you tell me, I don't know.
See, that should be on you. They're gonna be out of the, the program. That, that should be your, you know, what, what, if you're planning an event with the staffing, the, the, you know, you've got, how many folks you're gonna expect, the, the, what the staffing's gonna be, what the food, the beverages and so forth, you calculate, and you have utilities, you can prorate it however you want. But, you know, that, that's something that you should be able to create and not rely on their old data, because you're gonna take, do things differently.
Well, we asking, so say for example, we're saying it lost three hundred thousand, so it might be off. Two hundred seventy-five thousand is attributable to the rest of the food service portion that you currently have budgeted for Casper today. Only thing we're asking is, we're gonna take what is currently given, we don't want nothing more. So, out their budget right now, I, I can only assume if they went over, the village would be responsible. We're saying the stop gate is there. Only thing we asking is transparency from where we at now and we knew before. And every year, we're gonna come back and revisit the budget. Oh, you guys are doing well, so this is the budget this year. But what we want to come in is at an even playing field of what Casper was and, and start our new beginning from there. We think it would, I think it would be not the same playing field if we saying, Casper's here today, this is where they at, we take them out and this is who began it. Because we're gonna invest coming in straight through. So there's additional resources and marketing dollars that's gonna be massive that we're gonna spend through the door. That's not even part of your budget. So only thing we asking is, the budget that's intact now, again, I don't know your budget season, but when the next budget come, we come back and revisit. And if, and if, and if the, if the map starts to move at that point, so again, we're fine with it. But we want to start as where everything is at this moment say, we want nothing to change.
But it's not our budget, it's Billy Casper's budget.
So, so, but it's a budget that's approved by the board.
So, so, no.
So, so we, so Billy Casper's budget is their budget. The, the board does not approve Billy Casper's budget. All the board approves is the expenditures that the village is gonna pay out in order to support their budget. So the board does not pass Billy Casper's budget, but, any, any questions back on what you're saying? I mean, Brian put you on the spot, so I'm sorry. So food and beverage, give me an average amount of what is budgeted for food and beverage. I know we work on this concept, so I'm sure you can throw some out.
All the funding that you provide for the place is getting pushed really into food and beverage. So if you provide three hundred thousand dollars for funding here, most of that subsidized to food and beverage. Billy Casper just operates golf, we believe that golf turn a profit here. So, and we wouldn't need any, um, funding from the village if we're just managing the golf.
Which I, which I know is, that's what, that's what we discussed, so, you know.
Well, baby chief, just, the thing that I just want you to understand is that, when we gave Billy Casper the contract to manage this place, they gave us a budget. They said the first year was going to, they were going to lose three hundred thousand, second year they were going to lose about a hundred and five thousand, and then they were gonna start turning a profit. That's what, on the basis that we took it. Now, what happened was, they were told to open when the golf course wasn't open, so it shifted everything. You know, and that's why they lost money initially and why the projection is now, they won't need money from us, because the golfing operations will be profitable, to the point where, you know, the, you know, because they had to redo the golf course, Eric, Eric Gates, it's just eighty percent of the equipment and the kitchen was bad, so they have to do a whole lot of stuff. Let, let alone the, the, the bad reputation that we had to try to win folks to come back. So, going forward here, and that's what I mentioned earlier, the plan was no money. The village is not subsidizing that, that, that operation. They should be making a profit where the village now is supposed to receive some. We pay them a management fee, which I guess, you know, something's gotta change along those lines also. So that's why I'm saying that it, that it would be on you moving forward here.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, and, 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 so you're saying that the projection was that in twenty eighteen, the village would not pay Billy Casper one penny, and Billy Casper would generate revenues from the golf course and?
For the fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty.
Nineteen twenty, so the revenues they generate from golf and food and beverage sales would support itself. So it'd be a, it'd be a, uh, uh, moving forward, it'd be able to support itself with no help from the village. No paying the light bill, gas bill, water bill, the village is not paying one penny, Billy Casper is generating its own money and the village never cuts another check.
Right, that was.
That's what's happening right now?
No, because we're, we're still in.
Oh, that's what we asked.
So why, well, let me just explain, we are in fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen. The prior fiscal year sixteen seventeen, they, they incurred, uh, debt, uh, expenses that they needed to pay. They deferred it about two hundred thousand to this year and to get them through the summer, right, up to, to September. After that, they were good to go. And so when we're looking at the next fiscal year, which is two thousand, uh, nineteen twenty, then they should be self-sufficient, that was the plan.
So I have a question and I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw it your way and I don't want to put you on the spot. The projected budget showed me that food and beverage was generating thirty-five thousand dollars a month in the month of May. Did this place generate thirty-five thousand in food and beverage in the month of May? Because that was what was on the budget.
No.
Okay, so, I hear what you're saying. What we're saying is, we, what we plan to do is make thirty-five thousand in the month of May for twenty nineteen. And the money you already put aside for them to do it and it wasn't done, we're gonna take the same money and we're gonna do it.
We've already given them two hundred thousand already.
I get what you're saying, but.
We were giving them fifty thousand for July, August, and September, and that was it.
Correct, okay.
See, the other thing is that kind of, uh, I'm concerned with, um, is that unless you generate the, the other, your, your own clientele, well, we weren't getting much clientele in the winter anyway, but after Labor Day, the golf, you know, there's not gonna be nearly as much golfing. Well, you're gonna be generating your own clientele, is what I'm saying, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm sorry.
So, so, a, a couple of things. I love Red Star, I, I love Red, Redwood, I go to both for karaoke, for comedy nights, for stepping lessons, so. And I meet people there who come here for stepping on Friday night. Why? Because that's what they, we're known for. If we had something and everybody knew we were known for that, they would come for that. People from Chicago come out here for stepping on Friday night. But just for random after-work cocktails, if you give me thirty percent off, I'm there. If you have a, a, a special night, comedy night, I'm there. And, and I know both places that you have, everything that I've gone to is free. So I'll eat and I'll drink, because when I walked in the door, it was free. Now, about Billy Casper. We gave, they gave us a budget, we funded them, right? And they were supposed to be profitable by the end of this fiscal year. But I thought we also paid them a management fee. This, if, and so, and, and I.
Billy Casper's waived their management fee since they've been here, we have not paid them a management fee. They've agreed to waive it, so they have not paid any management fee at all, because they've been losing some, you know, because of the budgetary projections and how things have gone.
Okay, okay, well, that's good. I don't know how much we've lost, but I don't recall the last time that we received, uh, yearly actuals. I know at the meeting I was asking from the golf course, I don't remember getting them. Uh, when you first took over, I think the first six, the first six, nine months, we, the guy would come and give us a report, show us the numbers, but we haven't seen that lately.
The board has gotten a monthly report and I can pretty much show them through my email up. The board has emailed, yeah, when they send their budget out, I, I've sent it out and on three occasions, board members have said they have not received it and I've sent out a, a whole year of budgetary numbers, because I send them out, I'm being told they aren't received and we send them out again. So I can go back and look, well, they.
I'm sorry, what does that mean? Okay, so, so then, if, if we're getting those on a monthly basis, and, I'm sorry, we're all getting them. Uh, if we're getting those on a monthly basis, at the meeting I was at two weeks ago and so on. Billy Casper said they would give the numbers. So if we get them every month, what's the holdup?
Then, um. So Billy Casper, you write what the information, because I know there's been emails that went back and forth between you and them. So can you explain what information you, you share?
So our, our financials roll up all the departments. Uh, Redwood doesn't need all the departments. So for us to break that out, it entails a lot of hours of manipulating spreadsheets. So, you know, it takes a lot of time to get that done. And to do it for an entire year, you're talking about a week's worth of work. And unfortunately, I haven't had time to just sit in my office and pull spreadsheet numbers to do it.
So what has, so what did you say?
Uh, we just pulled out the food and beverage budget.
Every month for the entire operation. I just put the food and beverage, okay, just clarify that.
Right, so.
Thank you so much for that.
Based on Bill's contract considerations he sent you, um, he's opened up the dialogue to where we can send the rest of the financials. So I gotta pull everything that pertains to food and beverage, general liability, um, G and A expenses, everything besides golf. And it's a manual process.
So, so, um, because I think, if I'm hearing it correctly, if they looked at your numbers and it said thirty-five thousand dollars for food and beverage, they were expecting that that's what they would be getting, but what you're saying is that you didn't do thirty-five thousand last month in, in food and beverage.
Yeah, well, so, so the budget that we got.
But even if they did, whatever, if they did, and you're running the business, then you would be getting the thirty-five thousand.
We would continue with, so, when you take over a business like a restaurant, you wanna look at the numbers of people coming in, what they're ordering, how much you're spending, uh, drinks, breakout. It's a lot of stuff you look at when you take over a restaurant. So if they, if the budget says that we project to make thirty-five thousand in food and beverage and liquor in the month of May.
Gross, that would be net.
Correct. And then, I say, okay, based on that, I'm gonna buy your restaurant. I'm gonna give you a hundred thousand dollars, because based on what you said, you're generating thirty-five a month. But if you hand me the keys and I come in and it's actually generating seven thousand a month, I just got locked, because you're not generating what your budget said. So your budget was inflated to sell the property. And I'm not saying they're inflating the budget, what I'm saying is that the budget that we've received, the numbers on that budget aren't the numbers that are actually.
Well, here's a different set of things you need to, this is what you need to make. It's one thing for them to budget more, because I've seen some ridiculous budgets for the golf course. It's the actuals that you need to take.
That's what we've been asking.
So, they should be able to provide the actuals. I mean, you know, and, and, and I was, their, their actuals, I have great confidence in. But before that, forget it. I looked at the budgets and told them, there's no way in hell you're gonna be able to make that budget. And, and I was right, because then what, they had to lost six, seven hundred, a hundred thousand dollars, even though they said it was gonna break even, but they have, I think, reasonable act, actuals related to food and beverage and, and because if you're gonna be taking not only the events that they have, but also the golf piece, that's a number that you should be able to rely on, but we don't have that.
And I would, if we get it, we will rely, that's what we're asking for.
And that's why.
First six months of the year is okay with us.
For you to understand and have the, the, the pro forma financials that are accurate. Because like, you know, I used to be a, a score counselor also for Small Business Association, and I used to tell my clients, make your mistakes on paper when you still got an eraser. And don't jump in the pool and find out the water's too deep. And that's why I want to make sure that you fully understand what exactly is what here.
That's where. And so, and so we can, like you said, give a pro forma, we cannot do it, because if we see thirty-five thousand dollars in budget, oh, we need two cooks, three chefs, we need four buzz boys, we, we need a whole host of things in order to generate that, we know that. So that budget is very material to us, that's why we are, give us actuals, we're gonna base everything off of what Casper's doing. That's why we keep going down that road, because in order for us to truly do, I can stay up two hours and build this whole thing out there now. But it'd be, we don't know what we're dealing with, so we really trying to find out what, what the cards are on an actual basis and.
But he should be able to do that just based on staffing. He, he, I'm sure that, that their sales have been recorded accurately, but just based on the staffing, he can. he can let you know what those costs are pretty quickly, right?
Right.
So, and when we last met...
Cause I used to do that for a living, so I know, e- even without getting data, because when you're proposing a new program, you do a projection, cost out a salesman for the car, benefits, the whole nine yards, and then determine what the sales are gonna be.
Yeah, and we can do that. We can give you a, uh, we can give you a projected budget on what we think it'll cost to do the things we'd like to do here. Uh, taking out the overhead, which would be the electricity and the gas and the maintenance, the fixed costs, that we don't know what they are, we can take those out and we can give you a projected budget on the cost for us to operate the restaurant based off of what we currently do. But again, if, if, if this, if this, if this building has fifteen people walking through it on a day-to-day basis, that's a huge difference from a building that has forty-five people. My budget is gonna be based, I'm gonna do my homework before I give you a budget. Um, in order for me to do my homework, I have to understand how many cars are driving past here, how many people are walking through here, how many, what's happening here and there. So we can go about it that way, but because we were already in discussions with Billy Casper and the village and they already had that data for us, we said, why recreate the wheel and do everything else when they're gonna give it to us? So I do have that...
Well, but I'm just here to tell you, you need to do your own thing, so don't lie on how they done.
I do have, I do have, yeah, August 1st, I submitted the projected budget with the actuals from last year based on the budget projections. I just checked my phone and I sent that email out. That was incomplete information, let me know, but I did forward it unrestricted. So I sent you unrestricted budget based on their budget projection and it should have had actuals on there from the previous year. I did forward that out. On June 20th, that same budget projection with, uh, the budgetary breakdown was sent out to the board. I just reviewed that, that was on June 20th, uh, that was sent out just to verify that information was sent out because it stated that it was not received, so I just wanted to clarify that. But there, at this point, I think in order to properly kind of move forward with this, to come up with a plan, I think if you guys have specific data that you guys are looking for, provide that specific data in the documented email to Billy Casper. Billy Casper makes sure that information is sent out unrestricted, so copy the mail on that, that documentation. If you guys need to review, revise any documentation that you submitted based on that data, then we can kind of go forward from, instead of going back and forth from the bank, who got, who got what, who didn't get what, you know? Because of course, you know, what's the point of doing that? At the end of the day, we're trying to get to the same point, correct Mayor? So I mean, let's just get to that point, but for people to say that things that weren't received and all this other stuff, we can deal with that offline because I just reviewed my email and I know what was sent out, so let's just go forward from there.
So we faced this meeting today based off the fact that they thought they were gonna get actuals up to a certain date and they would have a week or so to get their data input today so we can move forward a little bit before August, I mean, sorry, October. September, we knew what was gonna happen, so that's why we, we, that's why this is a special workshop and a special meeting. So now, if, if we're gonna give them some information, how long will it truly take to give them an information? Or do you need this information?
They do. They definitely do.
Okay, so how long will it take before we, Billy Casper can give Redwood the information?
Well, me and Bill are working on it, we could do it in three, four days.
Right.
Cause there's sensitive information with payroll numbers in there, we need to pull out.
Yeah, we need sanitized stuff.
Right.
Okay.
All right. Now, granted, keep in mind, our position here for Billy Casper, this is a banquet hall. You know, we ran this place, all our actuals are based on performances, based on around a banquet hall that has a golf course that serves food. What your position is, is gonna be a nightclub, sports bar, lounge-type atmosphere, so our actual shouldn't even come close to what you're doing, uh, moving forward or proposing because like I said, we, our focus primary was banquets and a golf course and food to serve golfers. You know, that's why we're not open late hours, we didn't wanna get into that business. So if you're looking at our actuals, it's based on banquets.
Okay, and that's good, they just need something to work around.
Okay, my input, um, well, I have been to both places and I remember the ribbon cutting in Olympic Field. Wonderful, great. Um, I have been there because it's, they are very politically connected as well. I've been to a lot of political campaign parties there. What we need here, one of our biggest complaints, we miss the brunch. The people really used to enjoy coming here for brunch and that is so needed and I would love to see that again. On your research, you said you already covered that, those are my notes, have you done your research? We do have an industrial party, a party, I'm sorry, industrial political, um, community, shall I say. Uh, we have one of the greatest things which you'll see tomorrow or soon on our cable station, a great, great thing for University Park. As IBW was here, they opened their own new institute, institutional campus there. It is phenomenal, it was over two hundred and some people there. So you think about another institutional facility besides Governor State that'll have students and that's one, that's one of the biggest, that's, um, Local Nine now. You see the biggest one, one of the biggest ones is on 127. Well, now University Park has one in University Park and we are super happy to see that. That was over two hundred people there yesterday. Trustee, uh, Williams and Trustee, um, Brooks was there with us, it was phenomenal. And our Secretary of State was there, people flew in from Washington, the headquarters of IBW there. So that's a big area there. Our industrial park is over seventy people, seventy companies back there and I would look for the place, I know sometimes they just could have Christmas parties. They could have, that's something to let you know. You could go back there or they have conferences, this is supposed to be a conference center as well and they could host that, I would love to see Wi-Fi here and they could host some of their conferences here while they're, um, meeting and they don't have, they wouldn't have to go so far. Um, the Wi-Fi students, the students is something that I look for. The college students want somewhere else to go besides Governor State, another environment to hang out and have a nice lunch or dinner in the evenings. We have that, that would be a great thing. The steppers, I have to go to Trustee Wilson, they do, they come from Redwood, you know, they come from Red Star. They go over there and train or get their classes and then they come here and that's a good connection. That will be an automatic connection for you. Uh, our seniors, there was a group of seniors years ago. They used to be right in the back corner there, they had a little group and they had a poker party. It was like fifteen of them, little ladies, and they were so hurt when they closed this place in the wintertime because they look forward to breakfast and their poker party in the corner. And they came to me and said, Mayor, what happened? That was their livelihood. So those are the things, that too, to see that back open and they were happy that we got our golf course back. I was super happy. We are the talk of the town, this golf course here, it is beautiful. Casper has made this a beautiful facility and I thank you for it. And they've had a lot of parties here and I've seen golfers here, two hundred and some, some other times. When they first opened that, I remember the previous guy that was here to retire, he told me, he said, my God, we opened our first, first golf outing, that session, they had over two hundred and twenty engagements. That was phenomenal. So it's going to make itself self-sustainable in a few. But after, oh, after parties, GSU, now that you're on board, GSU, I thank you for that and I'm really proud of you, congratulations. But GSU, Mayor, Mr., uh, his name was Nateville, he had mint conditions, I went there that night. It was fabulous and first people were in party mode, they was all hyped up and then they, boom, it's like a balloon hit. They wanted to go somewhere else, they could have come here. You could put pluggers and get involved with their area and say, right after that, they can come right here at night and party and have drinks or whatever and socialize continuously. Um, that relationship you have with Will Davis, he is a great contact, not representative of Will Davis, just another Will Davis, there, Governor State. So he, I know he's really hyped and happy about that. Um, after, uh, business after hours, the village board, we used to have that and we're going to start that back, as a matter of fact, we have a sponsorship for that. So we're gonna start having business after hours to let them know we have that here again. And they love that, the network with the South Super Bowl mayor managers, they used to use this facility in the wintertime too, but it was closed, but they used to use this here for different businesses and that. And I know, congratulations again, on your award that you received, Chairman 57, Mr. Davis. And that, they're looking always for a facility to host things and I know you're a big component with that organization as well as University Park. The political support that you have, um, I look forward to that because I've been there, Troy Hudson's parties, every Troy Hudson's and all the fundraisers they have, because you've built a relationship with the candidates and different political people and I know they can always use your facilities for that. And I know that will draw something from University Park. And need for lights, the chief of my line, people will go anywhere for a party. I've gone as far as up north to events, south north, Schaumburg, people will travel. I have friends that work with me, they come here for stepping and they live on the west side, they live on the north side, they come here for stepping. So, cause they saw our pictures on the wall and they're like, oh my God, I know you're mayor, I'm there. But our pictures there, those people are coming from around everywhere and I do feel that if this is done correctly and you get your statistics that you want and Super Bowl night, and the thing that bothered me the most was we didn't have this place open for the winter. Valentine's Day would have been a bust. We didn't have golf, those different, Mother's Day, Father's Day, so many different occasions. We could have, and Super Bowl night, oh my God, this place should have been blowing up. But that's what I think you can bring, because I've seen your places, the football nights and Super Bowl nights and people that do go there, so I have faith that you do it, show us, but I would like to see a report at our board meetings to let us know on a continuous base and a regular base where you are financially with us because we don't need to, as Trustee, you know, complain, say, we don't need to lose any more money. And it was, and I'm gonna tell you this, straight, straightforward, I don't wanna discount, we don't need a discount. I don't wanna discount because that's what, there was a lot of misuse on that before, as he said. People felt that they were entitled and that we can't make money when people get discounts. People coming in free and making money, that's good. For me to tell you, the hamburger's five dollars and I need half off, that's ridiculous, that's stupid. I go wherever to pay the full price, I go to Fuddruck's and get a full hamburger and pay for it. I should come to my old place and pay the same thing. But my one thing, and I've talked to, um, Mr. Patrice on that, that if any one of our record residents come here and they want, they wanna say, I need something here, cause so many of our residents have been turned around and turned down because of the price, I don't care what they ask for, their residents at University Park, if they have to wrap a piece of bacon on a stick, I want them to have it here. Make, say, what's your budget, let's make it happen for our residents. If you're gonna give a discount to any, any ten percent to our residents, I can understand that. But elected officials are nothing of fifty percent off of anything, that's totally wrong and robbery. So we've tried to make money here for the village and I think you're refreshing, you're young men, I know you're background and marketing and yours and accounting for Loyola, is that your account for Loyola? So you know money, you know budgets, so you know how to make that happen. So the success that I've seen both of you have had, phenomenal. And we would be honored to do that and I hope the marriage can make it and work for it. And I like to have a big screen TV in America, so everybody else dressed right on their names, give them the props, but they do. And that's the younger people, we'll have the thirty-some-year-old here and the forty-year, thirty that are, and karaoke nights because the one place in, because I won't name any of these, they have a smaller place and it's packed because of the karaoke night. And the guy works for me and I'm like, oh my God, I know you come way out here, you live in the city, he comes way out there for karaoke nights. So the people will follow, lights or no lights, they'll get a flashlight and follow, they'll put their phone lights on and follow. But yes, we do, we can put, you can work with, come up, got us in there, like we said, there are donations and you can make a fine, get some money to make this happen, like I told them, go to Dollar Store, get dollar lights and put around here like you have in here. You can just put them in there, just put them outside as well. Put, uh, sol, solar, uh, what is it, solar lights, those things to work. So whatever we can do, we want to really make University Park a diamond in the rough, it needs to be buffed. Cause when we got IBW, that was one of the biggest things the mayor from Manhattan was congratulating in this village for getting such a facility in University Park. So we're on the run and we're making it happen and now we got I-57 coming in here. It's, I mean, it's here now, the people come in off of that to step, they said they love it that we got I-57 here now. So we're getting more people to come in easier to the golf course. So I have faith and I'm looking forward to it, I hope it works and give us what we need and we'll contemplate on it or our attorney and see what it looks like.
Mayor, Mayor, sorry, wise, can you, can you provide some legal considerations in regards to the timeframe that it would take, the requirements that would be required? Cause I just, you know, I think the expectation is to be put out there, I think everybody here is looking for a quick turnaround and I don't think it's gonna be expedient as you think it's gonna be, so if you would just provide a timeline and a golf process, I think that would be great.
More than likely because there's still work to be done, as we've seen today. My estimate would be with a quick turnaround, it would be October 18th, I had to go before the board, that would be a quick turnaround. There's no guarantees. First hurdle you have to get over, Billy Casper seems to have been, um, working towards this and they're not being obstructionist, which is the first thing, because right now the village has a contract with Billy Casper, which I think goes for another three and a half years approximately. So it's the first thing, that you'd have to renegotiate the contract with Billy Casper at the same time as you're negotiating a new contract with people who would be taking over food and beverage. There's insurance considerations, as the manager stated earlier, there's a list of items that Billy Casper said they would not handle if this were to come to fruition, um, you would have to make sure that those things are all aired out. One of the major ones is insurance. Um, but there, I believe there were six items, five or six items, um, that were identified by Billy Casper. Additionally, this facility, taxes on bonds were issued and I think funds from those bonds were used to get the golf course, that has to be looked at. Uh, I know it's, the juror's identified in Billy Casper's current contract, that's another issue as to what can occur. So that the taxes, the status of the bonds will, will issue, that's something else is gonna be looked at. Which, which that's major, that's probably the major issue involved.
Even affected their management fee.
Right, they are. So both, that's just a few of the items that have to be looked at.
Is there any liability issue in regards to not issuing a formal RFP, competitive process in as far as it relates to the restaurant operation? Is there provision, ordinance that allows the board to waive that and will that open the village up to any liability based on any past litigation or current litigation that was involved?
There, there is current litigation, uh, involving the golf course at this time, which is, as you stated, I won't, I won't go into it at this juncture about that litigation. Um, I keep looking into the research more in the village's ordinance regarding to whether or not there's an ability to waive the RFP process or the bid process. I do know under the ordinances, that there is a provision, um, for purchasing, uh, where the bid process could be waived for certain items, uh, but I would need to look into that as to, as it relates to the golf course and this process to what, um, activities would be occurring.
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of questions here. Your, your expectation based upon at least the original pro forma that I saw was that you would not be paying any rent?
Correct.
Take the pro forma. And, you know, that makes sense because you're gonna lose money probably for a couple of years. And that's just my expectation. The other thing is, uh, earlier, um, we were talking about why it was so warm in here. Trustee McMullin was complaining and was explaining to him that the air conditioning units need to be replaced. So if they're not paying, paying any rent, normally when you're paying rent, you've got responsibility then for, you know, the, the, uh, replacement of the, the landlord has responsibility for replacement of the HVAC units. the landlord has responsibility for replacement of the HVAC unit. So who's gonna, and it needs to be replaced, because you're gonna have events that, you know, people are gonna be real uncomfortable. I know I was real uncomfortable up here stepping a few months ago. It was so hot and humid, because the, you know, with air conditioning units just weren't handling. So how is that gonna work? We need to somehow resolve, you know, the investment or costs related to that too.
So I got the contract considerations that Billy proposed, and I can go through them if you're interested. The first one is the insurance of the building. Billy Casper will not cover the building. The building is primary of food and beverage operation. So all the insurance for the building would lie on the food and beverage operator with a cost sharing provision based on the little section that we operate in the pro shop. Let's see, utilities. The restaurant owner will, should be the primary responsible for the utilities to the building and have the utilities placed in their name. Billy Casper's contract would have to be amended, re-sculpt of services and fees, which we would probably lower, management fees. We would also need to establish an outing menu that makes sense, and we've discussed that, and they have no problem with that. All food and beverage employees would be employed under the restaurant operator. The general liability insurance would have to be figured out who's responsible for what. That's something still on the table. The building cleaning and maintenance outside the pro shop would be the responsibility of the restaurant operator. All landscaping and exterior of the building maintenance would be the responsibility of the restaurant operator. The accounting for the golf would be done by BCG, and accounting for food and beverage would be by the restaurant operator. BCG will maintain a separate bank account from food and beverage. And then BCG will not party to an agreement with the village and an operator. It'll just be with the village. So we will not have a contract with Redwood.
Okay. So, I'm sorry. So we just feel this is our facility.
Correct.
Okay. Right?
That's true.
Okay. All right. Now, as far as the air conditioning and that, so who's to provide?
I'm gonna go to the office.
Okay. That's all right. So that's the air conditioning that we should be providing. Okay. Okay. All right. Now.
Generally, when you, when you pay for replacement of air conditioning, the people are paying rent. This is not gonna be the case, because I'm assuming, you know, either they have a grocery or, you know, where we get a portion of the proceeds, or not at all. So we're not gonna be getting any money from them, you know.
So, go ahead. So if they do not take over, who's gonna pay for the air conditioning? Because we still need air conditioning. Somebody has a wedding, and we have events. I believe I was told we have events every weekend.
Every weekend.
Every weekend. So luckily, it's about to get a little cool. But like, if somebody was having an event this weekend and the air conditioning broke, who will be paying for the air conditioning too?
Well, we don't own the building, so we don't pay for it. We just manage what is given by the village.
Okay.
Yeah, generally, the owner of the building is responsible for that place, that kind of stuff.
Right. We are, because we are a commander.
Okay.
Okay, basically, they're not gonna be paying rent? So they're not paying rent?
One thing that we stated, if a profit was turned because of considerations, we would turn the same profit back to the village.
So the profit, explain, because I don't want this out there wrong, crazy. Explain, Mr. Brown, how this works, the profit of this place to the village.
So we have not, as far as actual terms of profit and percentage, we have not even got to that point of negotiating the contract. But if a profit was to be turned, it would be my expectation that it would be stayed in the contract based on the profit, level of profit that comes in, then it would be a profit sharing kind of provision, contract. So the things would be addressed based on the level of profit coming in, based on the front monies that are expended, monies that are placed into the business based on the food and beverage operators, for example, the D V's and various other capital expenses. If it was to turn a profit, it would be my expectation to at least reverse them, if not all, the percentage of the money that they provide based on the assets that they provide to the facility.
Currently, trustee Williams asked a question. Does anyone pay you on here? Okay. We're actually, we're actually paying them to operate the facility, keep it alive.
At this point, we're not paying them anything to operate the facility.
Okay, but I mean.
If, so if they're in a position. In a position where we were getting a profit, yes, the management fee will be paid to Billy Casper based on profit coming in. When I became manager, I renegotiated provisions in regards to monies that would be expended during the closing of the golf course. So Billy Casper agreed not to take any management fees based on the deficit that was brought in by the village.
But if they did make a profit, then the village would get a little bit of the profit.
Right. That's how that works.
Yes.
So we would get something from it eventually, of making sure, because we just wouldn't want it to go down. Because it's just so fabulous right now, and I'm really, really proud of this and what you've done. Billy Casper to our golf course has been great. It's excellent. Everybody is so happy to come back, and it's alive. They enjoy coming here, and it's growing. They golf here themselves, but other people are too. So that's just other things we can do. Now, I'm gonna say this. A lot of times, University Park has lost things because of time constraints. And I'm a time person. Where I work, you have a project, put a name on it. You have a date, target date. You have an estimated date, what you're gonna do, how you're gonna do it, when you're gonna do it, and it's gotta be done. Our project right now is due in December. And today, we have new statuses every day. Where are you with this? You gotta get this done. It's done. So I'm going to put that here. I wanna see stats. It shouldn't take forever to do things. Everybody is respected in what they do. Our attorney is effective, he's an attorney, he does this every day. He does stuff. So I'm not saying, you're not, no one's new at this. So I don't think it should take a month or a Sunday. I'm saying that because I wanna see the village prosper as soon as we possibly can in a correct manner and making sure that we're updated on everything. But we drag out things too long in this village, and that's how we lose so much. And people walk away because we're procrastinating. You know why? You get timeframes, timely dates in here. What are we gonna do here? What went out, as trustee always says, what went out and have a result? We need to put some timeframes on this timeline, so what are we gonna do this? When are you gonna start it? When is it gonna get done? And that's it. Because I wouldn't want a great potential to walk away and leave buildings. And then we're still going to back, and we're still losing money. Because this place is closed all winter. It's sitting here, and no money is getting made. We need to make money. And we have someone that's really doing it in an active and have a pattern and a career doing this, let's do it. Let's stop procrastinating, see what the numbers look like, if it's gonna work fine, if it's not gonna, no. And I don't wanna waste anyone's time. So I don't wanna, yeah, well, I'm looking at it. Well, maybe tomorrow, no, we need to have timelines of what we're going to do and get it done. I don't want to hear, procrastination doesn't do anything but procrastinate. So I just, a timeline, we need to do it, and see where we're going with it. And let's start working on this as soon as possible. We've already had meetings, the two of you. And I thank you for being courteous and gracious with them. And you guys have a marriage to think, if you make it meet, I appreciate that so much. To see businessmen making things prosperous and happy for everybody. So it could be a win-win situation for our residents, which they're looking forward to. They're tired of it on their tax dollars like I am. I pay taxes too. So we need to get this off and start it, and see a profit, and see some happy people in University Park. Because half our people don't even cater here. More people from outside come here than our own residents. Because why? Sometime, they said, it's just too expensive. A lady wanted to have a birthday party here, and they said it was so expensive, they couldn't afford it. This is going back now.
Okay.
And it was, because they said they just couldn't afford it. Let's see, trustee Milton Payton said, the bad system was horrible. It was misuse and abuse. We don't wanna see that anymore, and I'll make sure of that. Okay? So with that said, anyone have any else, anything else to say? Any comments?
Uh, Mr.? Mayor, I just wanna say, yeah, I agree with what you want to say in reference to making things work. I just wanna put my two cents, that, I don't wanna sound like trustee Curtis McMillan, but it took four elections for me to get to this spot. But I will say that in those elections, when I received the packet at home, trustee Milton Payton is right. It was very significant to sit there and watch six hundred thousand dollars negative, negative to the golf course. So what I wanna say is that in this business world, if it does indeed work and it comes back to the board, so be it. The one thing I don't wanna see again, and that is the golf course, again, losing money like it has in the past, and which is, you know, at this point, if it does, you know, shame on me if it does happen. But, you know, we wanna make sure that this goes the right way compared to what it was in the past. About a half a million plus is embarrassing, so.
And that is the bond payment, which is another half a million that the community has to pay for this. So we're talking well over a million dollars that our community is paying.
That's right.
One final question. And, you know, and I'm all for doing some things. I've been, since we were elected in two thousand and eleven, we were trying to get other programs in here. So, you know, and we've heard proposals from other folks also that were probably involved in litigation with now also. But, you know, having said that, I just wanna make you to know that, you know, I'm in favor of doing something. You know, but I don't wanna see us, you know, six months, a year down the road, have to shut it down, and the people are saying, well, this board, because I ain't gonna be here, that screwed up again. They, 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 they don't know what they're doing. So we should have a reasonable expectation of what, if you're gonna be making money, so that, particularly, so they can go back and tell folks that, you know, maybe they're not gonna make much money right now, but the village is, the business is gonna get it. Right now, you lease your two locations for Red Star and Redwood right now, so you pay a lease. So this is gonna be a little different arrangements where the mayor's asking for some accountability. Because right now, you just rent the place, what you do is your thing, there are your financials and so forth. So this will be a little different for you. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And again, we do have the residents at heart. They need to have, they need to see this, and they're so looking forward to it. And I think if the way this board is working, we're moving forward, things are happening good for us. And we always keep the residents in mind. Everyone on this board is constantly looking for betterment for the residents of University Park. And they're happy about it. I hope they are, and I hope they appreciate it. They don't, God bless them anyway. But we're doing our ever best to make sure things are done with transparency, because this wasn't done before. And we're doing with honesty, and we're doing with passion from our heart to make it better for University Park. I'm very grateful for your foresight seeing in this. And I have a lot of faith in seeing what you've done. It's not like somebody that you went by and saw, I see how it pops and jumps in here. So that's what gives me the confidence in making sure. So as soon as we get this work done, our attorney, the legal, and I just can't say enough of what Casper has done here, and their, the golfers, it's just been phenomenal. And everyone, no one is complaining about, about how greens already just think, they thought it was a miracle how it came about. So I'm happy for that, and I'm really, really looking forward to this. So if anyone have anything else to say, comment, please, just tell them.
I do.
Yes, sir.
Billy Casper, this was from the ground. I know in the, in the list of things you all were not being responsible for, you mentioned landscaping and not keeping on the exterior. Are we talking just these bushes right here?
Yeah, we're just talking about whatever's touching the building.
Just touching the building.
Right.
You have to do graves.
So, yeah, no, we don't want you touching the bunkers.
All right.
I can make a suggestion for the steppers. The woman wears stilettos, bringing high shoes. And I had suggested, I hadn't suggested it to them, but that we have to use a golf cart or some type of contractual company to escort the people from their cars in and disturb that and bring them to the door.
That would be like a valet type of thing.
Yes.
We did offer that, and they were, they didn't want to do it. They preferred for their guy to walk them into the door. And we have the guys to actually go to the cars and meet them. And they was like, no, no. Then at the end of the night, we would have the cart there again, try to get them to their cars, and they would insist, no. But we do have our door person, walk ladies out too, because it is dark. So we do ensure that the couple is actually seen to their car safely.
Yeah, we thought it was a great idea. They chose, and we were shocked that people are going out, coming back in, like, where are they at?
I would have jumped in. Those people were on a dark night. Okay, well, anything else, anyone? Okay. Okay. Motion to adjourn. So moved by trustee Wilson, seconded by trustee Williams. Thank you all for all the time and effort. All the favor.